It's 6:45.
Yeah. Kathy, yep, looks like we can start. You wanna call the meeting to order, Mayor Malone?
I'm ready. Thank you for joining us, everyone. It is, I don't know what day it is. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, and we are here tonight to have a budget workshop meeting. Tonight, we're going to have an introduction.
She froze.
Talk about Finance, Treasurer, Blair Memorial Library, Parks and Recreation, and Senior Center, Police Department.
Foes again.
Do you like me to do roll call?
Yeah, was I frozen?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, do you roll call? I'm gonna go turn off, unplug every Amazon device in my house.
All right. Mayor Milan.
I'm here in Claussen.
Councilmember Moffett?
You're in Claussen.
Councilmember Phillips?
You're in Claussen.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here in Claussen.
I got one of the closest to me. Hopefully, that's the problem. Can you hear me okay now? Great. Okay, so we're gonna begin the evening with public comments. If anyone in the public would like to speak, let it be known.
Ken, raise your hand or just unmute yourself and state your name.
I don't see anything in chat, Mike.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we have Mike go over and tell the community the process we went through to get today and, you know.
That was actually the next thing. I was going to say, Mike, why don't you give a great introduction about what we'll be doing this evening? And I think I'm just gonna kind of hand the meeting off to you because you're going to be talking to your department heads, and we'll just move along that way. I think we'll do it very informally. If anyone asks questions, just make them known, and let's make this as educational as possible for all of us. So, Mike, it's on you.
For agenda item, there's number four. Am I missing some? What are we gonna do? Are we, never mind, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yep, 4A, we're on that introduction. So, good evening, American Council, and to the residents and all the department heads that are on here right now. Thank you for taking the time to be here for the first of the budget workshops. Hopefully, I'm not too loud right now. Turn that down. I want to start off by saying we have heard clearly your concerns, and we are reviewing the process for allowing more time to review and adopt the said budget. With many changes over the past year with personnel, it's taken more time to review and adopt or send out the budget for you to review. We are trying, we've been trying to fix some bookkeeping entries over the last few months, and what changes in our payroll system has kind of caused some headaches as we face the shorter window. We have heard those concerns. We know that. Looking back at past scenarios, we are still within the timeframe of many past budgets. So, but with all that being said, I do want to remind you that these numbers are preliminary. And what this night is really dedicated is to have our department heads discuss their departments' goals, requests, and needs they feel they have in their respective departments. We know there are many items that are still outstanding as we wait to get information on millages and revenue sharing to put in place, clearly with the knowledgeable personnel we have in place now. Ms. Ral, we know that we'll be able to progress through these situations better in the future and plan accordingly. Kelly and I have spoken at length at all the concerns that we've heard from the residents, from council about this process. Not only that, and we clearly can promise that next year will be better. Hopefully, with this pandemic in the rearview mirror, as we know that, because we have to always remind ourselves that we've been doing this still under a pandemic, we are still in there. Hopefully, we're at the tail end of something and moving on to a better prosperous future. So, the intention, basically, these two nights is to go over the basics in this draft form, have a dialogue. And at the May 18th meeting, we'll have the public hearing, as was already addressed. We have a survey online that, right now, we are collecting the input from residents on their ideas. A lot of times, or for the future, because I do have an intention of bringing this up at the May 18th meeting, that we will hopefully have a true workshop where we can especially talk about the ARP money that we're gonna be getting, because we do need to know. We just received a final guidance, I believe, yesterday and today. I've been getting that information from the feds as to what they're actually specifying how to use it when we're getting the money. You know, you don't need a plan like today at 5 o'clock. Basically, as long as you expend it by, you know, a certain timeframe, have a plan in place, but we need to have this input that we've had now, that we're going to have these next few days, and as well as hopefully at a future workshop. I've discussed with legal counsel and the process of moving forward to extend our adoption, and we feel we are within our legal rights to extend to a later date while still following our current charter. So, as we know, federal and state government have extended deadlines, and they, we have the power to do so as well. Anyone know that, you know, as we look at it, our tax filing deadline was changed. So, we know we have our charter. We're gonna present a budget, but we're going to take a moment to allay any of those concerns with the expediency of this process. And so, make sure that, basically, at the 18th meeting, we'll have the public hearing. We'll get more information as we get more information here, and we'll potentially have a resolution for council approval to extend the adoption to June 1st, to still follow within that. So, preliminary numbers will be presented at the 18th. We'll get input from all the department heads over these next two nights, from council, from the public and the public survey. It will all collate together into all of that. And that's kind of the process moving forward. We do apologize for the timeliness of this thing. As we've seen it kind of come out, and as we've been trying to change things and get revenues matching and getting information from the state with other information, this is where we're at right now. But this is the start, and this is where we want to start with the dialogue tonight. So, on tonight's agenda, we have
I got a question for you.
Blair Memorial Library, Parks and Rec, Senior Center, Police Department, and the DPW and Engineering Department. So, that is what is on tonight, and that is kind of just the introduction. So, appreciate everyone who has joined us. Know again, these are preliminary numbers as we move forward with this process.
I got a question for you, Mike. I just want to make sure that the community knows that we just got all this information three hours ago. How, when you talk about extending it, how are you gonna extend the dates in the charter that we've already missed? You know, we missed the April, we missed in May 18th, we're supposed to approve it, so how are you gonna?
We approved a resolution, and in talking to the legal counsel, what the resolution states is that, within the same resolution, he and I spoke about this, is that we can approve, basically, in preliminary draft format, that we are approving those numbers with the authorization to extend it to the June 1st date, and that will succeed that. Last year, we know the budget was approved on June 2nd. I don't know if anything was done behind that, but that was done as well back then. So, that is the process.
What number are we gonna approve, and what medium are we gonna approve it? What numbers are we gonna approve, and what medium are we gonna approve them at?
You're gonna officially approve the budget at June 1st, but at May 18th, we'll have the preliminary numbers. Hopefully, we'll have everything in place to have it, and then give more time for public input, and then actually have the agenda or at June 1st for official adoption.
And I know you put out the request to the community for their input, what, yesterday or the day before? Have you got any back and?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we've gotten, I believe, Nick's. I looked yesterday, or actually this morning. I think we're up to about 235 residents, which Nick is gonna collate and put that part as the public record.
When you're gonna go do the cutoff date?
I believe we were going to do it. I mean, I think it's probably good to get it through the date of where we at. I would suspect the 21st, probably give a good two weeks, but maybe three weeks would suffice as well. I think we need a cutoff date probably of like the 24th or 25th, just so we can get all the information and then put into the packet. So, you have that information as you fully are presented the entire package. We'll put all the information out online as well as we kind of put everything into a spreadsheet. You know, make sure everything is out there to make sure everyone's voice is heard on the website.
There you go. I asked about, I asked about the process. How many meetings have you had with staff, and when did the staff get their budget and all that? I mean.
Why don't we proceed with the presentations as scheduled?
Why don't we ask, why don't we answer some questions first, and then I'm happy with listening to the budget? But people need to know.
Maybe some of your questions will be answered once you've had an opportunity to hear what people have prepared this evening. It's clear that the questions that you have right now are not necessarily related to the presentations that are going to be given, so let's just.
Yeah, they are.
They very much are, because these people only had a couple hours to do this, and I would never want to present to the officers of a corporation with only three hours. And is it their numbers, or is it your numbers, or can just go through that process? Is it your numbers or numbers?
Yeah, we met, I believe, as the end of March, early April, I think, with the department heads. We presented, we talked about over the budgets, the numbers that they're looking at, past year, and we kind of saw where we're with any projections. We were provided those to Kelly and I when she came on board. We started making sure all that was in place. Some of the numbers were in there. We've had some issues as we were trying to make sure all the, a lot of the personnel issues are trying to balance, especially within specific departments due to payroll. So, again, these are preliminary numbers. A lot of it was to present tonight. And really, what I asked for them is just, it's a dialogue to state, this is where we're at. Those numbers were our mutual numbers that we were talking about when I met with the department heads.
So, they all agreed on them numbers?
When we met there, there might be some things that were off a little bit, because we forgot about collective bargaining and agreements. So, we had to make sure we had the 2%, things like that, and the personnel costs. And as we're getting some other numbers in place, those will be put into place.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. You wanna go ahead and let's take our first person.
We can start with Kelly, if you want to start it off.
Finance? Good evening, everyone. I am just gonna give a slight over, a small overview of the accounting/finance budget. This budget contains the salaries for one individual, the finance director. I'm also requesting that a temporary, part-time individual be part of the budget as well. I don't expect that position to last very long, once I get filled in and all the nuances of City of Claussen and where items are posted. My last month has been investigative in nature, so I'm just getting the run of where everything's being posted and why. Part of the finance budget, I am requesting that we move the bank charges into general government as all the funds and departments run through the bank statement, so that it should be equally charged within the general government and taken out of accounting. Sorry about that. I have also increased the audit fees to account for a possible single audit with the ARP funds next year. I'm not sure if we will have a single audit next year, but if we expend more than $750,000 in federal grants, we will have to have that. It's, it's a pretty static budget.
Sure. Like, can you put your screen that you're sharing in full view, go under view, and just hit full screen? Be much easier to read. You wanna hit view? No, click on view.
Yeah.
Oh, yours is a little different. You should be able to go to full screen.
It's because, it's probably because I'm, well, because I'm in Excel right now.
Yeah, I just did it with mine. Okay, well, never mind then. It just. Go ahead. I'm sorry. It's just distracting when you see everything else. Okay. Sorry.
No problem, no problem. I am still working through the healthcare and pension costs to be included in my budget, but I did put an estimate under the requested portion. The, there was a miscellaneous charge this current year that will not be brought over to next year. That was $8,700. That was a balancing item on a bank reconciliation for the audit last year. Additionally, for the future, it is my intention to keep city manager, departments, council informed of all budget statuses, preferably have at least, at the minimum, a quarterly budget report. I will also be working with our financial system provider, BSNA, as we are required to change or update our charted accounts to match those as required by the state of Michigan Uniform Charter of Accounts. There will be a few changes, but a lot of the account numbers will stay the same. I also am, you'll see some slight changes throughout the year as I align charge revenues and expenditures within each department appropriately, according to GAAP and the Michigan UCA Uniform Charter of Accounts. Additionally, I believe that is it for me, if you have any questions on any particular item, but that is a broad overview of the accounting budget.
And I'm sure the question will come up that this will be put on the website tomorrow morning.
I do have some questions, but I think I'm gonna save them for specific departments.
Okay.
I have a question, and my question is, if you're new, you you were, this was all thrown to you. You're doing your best. We appreciate that. Have you had an opportunity to figure out maybe what some of your goals are, and are those included in your budget?
I think, basically, I wanna, I wanna maintain, you know, keep a good, close eye on the entire budget as a whole. Make sure that there's no overruns. Look for additional opportunities for revenue producing. Make sure that we are collecting all our revenues, and all the expenditures are appropriately charged into the right account, right department, right fund. Looking to really keep an eye, closer eye on maybe a chargeback, whether, for instance, DPW may charge for different, have a staff that has works under four different departments. So, I'm kind of looking a way to rework that a little bit, given the, the, giving our payroll system. We have a lot of issues pulling out information out of it. Takes quite a bit of time to get the desired information out of the payroll system. So, we're working on getting a payroll system that we can work with or keeping paychecks, the payroll system paychecks, and just having them tweak our payroll registers, any type of financial information, so we can quickly and easily add it into BSNA. Also, Stacy and I have been working on updating some things as far as including attachments in AP system. So, it, within any system or the GL system, you can see what invoice is paid. So, there's little tweaks that we're making to kind of make the processes easier for all departments. More accurate reporting.
Mm-hmm. I do have a question.
Sure.
Okay, um, the flood settlement funds that were required, can you tell me where those are in the budget that where they're coming out of?
I believe those are in the 592 fund. We paid that yesterday, Mike, I think.
Yes, because council approved that back in December to wire it, and then Renus finally had the invoice prepared.
So, that's been paid?
Yes.
And what line item did you say that was?
You'll have to give me a minute. I'll research it on my computer. I'm pretty sure it's in the 592 fund.
Yeah, it's not gonna be.
592-537-998001. I just got it out of your email.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Sorry, I missed that.
Can you repeat it, Stacy?
592-537-998001. I can look it up.
Okay. Just hadn't heard anything more about it, so. That's all.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kelly?
One more comment. I do appreciate your patience as I work this. Have struggled a little bit with some of the payroll reports, but I'm, the staff and everyone has been helping me, assist me on where staff is located, how many hours they work. So, I appreciate all the staff and their help.
I think one thing we all can agree on is that we have great staff.
Yes, we do.
Good job. Then we can move on to the Blair Memorial Library. Jenny?
Nope.
You want Stacy? I mean, it's fine, but it's tradition for Stace to go first, then me, but we can shake it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the treasurer. I'm sorry, Stacy.
That's all good. I was right in the world. Jenny goes next. Just remind me, Stacy.
Well, the Treasurer's Office, for a brief overview, we have two full-time staff members, and we have two budgets. I'll be presenting the assessing budget and the Treasurer's budget. The assessing budget, if Mike wants to put it on the screen, we can go over this really briefly. There isn't much change between this year and last year. Oakland County assessing is contracted, and so that is a percentage increase. It's very small. And the other change would be line item 900 for printing, and that's because we're including inserts to get the information out about physical distancing, options for making payment, whether it be online through the Dropbox, through the US Mail, and also including a return envelope. So, that's the reason for a little bit of increase in that line item. Were there any questions for the assessing budget? We can move to the Treasurer's budget, which is 101253.
Uh, this does not line up with what's on our screen, does it?
Has everyone now?
I said it doesn't, I'm not lining up. Oh, I see it. I don't understand where she's at on the screen that Mike's showing.
He's just starting the treasurer now. I had the assessor one up. Do you want me to pull that one up again?
Oh, okay. I see treasurer up there. Okay. All right.
Took the assessor.
You can, you can leave it on treasurer.
Okay.
Column I'm working for doesn't really show up on the screen. It's the recommended column with all the figures for the Treasurer's office, but it's pretty much the same as last year. Only difference is it's about $200 extra in operating supplies, and the only reason for that increase is this year we're budgeting extra for the PPE, such as gloves, Purell. I think we're probably gonna be set on wipes for the next year. We have plenty of those. The other line item that went up a little bit would be line item number 900, which is for printing. And that's because the cost of printing the tax bills went up. And the last one would be our software maintenance. We've combined our software maintenance. Used to have a separate line item called automation. We've combined it with software maintenance, and that is for our BSNA programs, the cash receipting program, our miscellaneous receivable program, the accounts payable, and BSNA, which is through Oakland County Tax, which is a separate charge.
I don't know. I think you can see everything, right?
Perfect. That's good.
Had to hide those pains. Sorry about that. And with the, the equipment, we have a contract with a mail thing that will be coming up for, to approve the contract with Quadian. So, for our mail system that we have here, just FYI to council.
Line item 931253931.
Yeah.
Equipment maintenance.
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
This one that you have up on your screen, is that the same thing that you sent us today?
That Kelly sent, I, I think.
The one that we received at 4 o'clock this afternoon. That's the only budget that I've seen.
That, is this the same one? Kelly, I'm using the spreadsheets that you broke down into departments.
Yeah, these are separate departmental worksheets, and the budget you received this afternoon should have the same budgets in there.
It doesn't look similar at all. Okay.
There was a small adjustment on the salaries, maybe a couple hundred bucks that I input for a step increase, but I believe that was before I sent you the report.
Kathy, there's two documents that she sent. One's council something, the other one's working something. If you pull up the council one, it looks like
That's what I meant.
It looks like the spreadsheet she's showing.
Not mine. Okay, I'll just have to keep guessing on this other one. Mine's not the same as this one, so.
Stacy, is that all you have for us?
For the Treasurer's Department.
And if I look at the line, Finance Treasurer, nothing else for you. I'm not pushing you aside yet. Don't want to skip anything. So, under your, under your numbers, I don't see many changes. When you look at your department and you think about what your plans are for the future, does this allow you to do a little bit of goal setting that you would have for your department?
Definitely. The increase in the cost of the printing is going to be valuable for the residents. Last year was the first year that we had the opportunity to include a return envelope for people, and a lot of people have used it. It helps with the Dropbox, putting it in the US Mail, just to increase physical distancing, so they have that option, so they don't have to have, provide their own envelope or come up in person. If the building was not open, they can just use a Dropbox, and they have the pre-printed envelope.
Can anyone hear me?
You froze.
Sorry, my frustration. Sorry, my frustration level is rising by the second.
Did Paula fall off?
I don't know where Paula went. She froze and then disappeared.
Um, is there, I mean, do you, would you like to move on or wait till, oh, there she goes?
I really apologize. For some reason, my computer does not want to be here tonight. It keeps killing me out of it. So I don't know what I just missed, but if no one has any questions for Stacy, let's move on to Jenny and let's talk about the Blair Memorial Library. And Jenny, where are your people? I miss having an in-person meeting and seeing your people.
My people are on tonight. Don't, they're there. Thank you for asking. So, good evening. Hello. I think everyone knows, I hopefully, I'm Jenny Gannad. I'm the director of the Claussen Library. I've been with the city for about 23 years and I just passed my seven-year mark as director on April 1st. I would like to thank the city for setting up my director's start date on April 4th. Thanks. So anyway, so this year we discovered that the library is capable of extending way beyond where we are and our four walls. Our curbside has done super fantastic. So whether people are picking up their materials at a table, attending one of our online programs, doing a take and make craft bag, or we're actually now going to people's front porches. We are finding that we have lots to offer and I think people are discovering that too. We currently have a staff of 13 people, two full-time people, myself and my youth services librarian, and then 10 part-time clerks. Since we started curbside, we've had 9,300 curbside transactions. So that means we have carried bags and boxes out our front door over 9,000 times to trunks, to tables, to people's front porches. And we've had over 1,500 patrons attend our virtual programs or craft programs virtually. So we've done very well. I'm super proud of my staff and our community for pitching in and making this happen. Just this real quick, share two of my favorite quotes. Sometimes the patrons will put notes in the Dropbox or attachments to books. One, I got your books and videos take us to a new and happy place during this challenging time. Thanks. But my most favorite one is, thanks so much for helping this make, make this at least bearable. So you're welcome. I'm glad. So, okay, onto the budget. So, um, over the past year, we've been extremely cautious with spending. Staff have volunteered to reduce their hours. Non-essential building maintenance has been postponed and library materials have been quarantined. So we are operating fine free right now. And also overall purchasing of materials has been reduced. It's unclear what our revenue situation will be this year. It looks like it will be okay, kind of on a wait and see right now. We get revenue from state aid, from video rentals, book finds and federal funding. However, being a member of a 74 library cooperative allows us to receive a number of vendor discounts in bulk pricing, which helps a great deal. And also they help us with federal funding and state funding opportunities. It's our hope that as we move into the next phases of operations, that we'll be able to slowly rebound our revenue and begin spending at a normal level. There are however, two categories that need to be addressed going forward. One is technology and the other is our building maintenance. The firewall, the switches and our telecommunications contracts will need to be updated and renewed this year. Those three items are part of a discounted pricing system, as I said. And in some cases, we will receive federal funding to offset costs. So that's cool. The staff and the public computers are on a rotating six-month replacement plan over the next five years. And this is funded through donations and the Friends of Library Book Sale. Right now we have a small cart outside at our curbside table of friends. Materials that we're selling, books, videos, puzzles. So if you're there and you're hesitating whether to buy that book on Macrame, please don't hesitate because you're helping me buy computers. So thank you. And then for building maintenance, it's been increased due to routine maintenance and also we've run into some unforeseen issues. The HVAC and the alarm system have been adventurous and so we do need to address that. And also our east and west main doors are starting to show their age. I'd like to try to return back to normal maintenance of carpet cleaning and window cleaning. We need some painting to be done. So my hope is that this year we can start to get that going. And my main goals are to focus on staff continuing education. It's been kind of a blessing to have Zoom. So through the American Library Association, Michigan Library Association and our cooperative, we've been able to attend webinars and other training and I'd like to continue that for the staff. And then also I want to continue with community outreach by bringing awareness and engagement of our library services and resources, especially as we move through our phases. And finally, something we've kind of discovered, we've always had a homebound outreach service, but this year it has really bloomed a lot. And I'd like to really focus on that because I think once we get back to normal or the pandemic goes away, we will definitely need to continue to offer that service to our residents. So that's a big goal of mine. Otherwise, we're just going to kind of maintain altitude, slowly press on the gas. But overall, the budget looks great to us. So we're very happy.
Thank you Jenny. We, I've heard so many positives comments about what you've done over this past year. I wish I had a little kid so I could have participated in some of those things, or I should have just done it myself, I guess, because they did look on. So thanks for all your creativity and for keeping a tired building running and for just being encouraging to all of our people. Would anyone like to address any questions with Jenny or give her some great encouragement?
Jenny, you guys are doing a fantastic job keeping us afloat over there at that library. Thank you very much and thank all your staff too.
I will. My pleasure. Thank you. It helps to have a great coworkers who are very encouraging and supporting of the library. So definitely not an army of one over here. So I work with good people. So thank you.
And you're excellent volunteers.
Yes, yes. Love my volunteers.
Okay, if no one else has anything for Jenny, we will move on.
Question. I remember Jenny, a couple of years ago, there was some concerns about salaries being below what they should. And, and, and I know there were some adjustments made were a couple of years ago. Is, has all that kind of been rectified? Is there no longer, I mean, are salaries where everyone's comfortable?
Yes, we are. We are getting there. I have asked for a little, no, none of the staff took a increase last year or any pay so increased last year. So this year I bumped it up a little bit, but yes, after this year, we are getting back to where we should be. So thank you for asking. That's a good question. Thank you.
Hey, anything else? All right, Jenny, thank you as always. And next Gina, we're going to talk about Parks and Rec and our senior center.
Right, right. Um, awesome. So my name is Gina Boyd. I've worked for Parks and Recreation Department for over 20 years now. But I became a full-time employee in 2014 and last spring, pretty much around March, I took over for Kathy, which was great timing. When we're fully operational, I oversee the senior center staff of about half dozen park staff of about two or three, and then recreation staff that can vary between four or five during the normal time. And then in the summer, we do usually increase when we have our one in the sun program. So it can go up to about 15. Right now it's really literally me and I have a cook-in part-time to do the meals and that's pretty much it. We're looking to hire some additional people right now because our staffing has dropped quite a bit. So, um, hopefully we'll, we'll get that going. Um, we've been providing the homebound meals and pickup meal service Monday through, um, Monday through Thursday. Uh, and we're doing about 40 meals a day, which is pretty good for us. We do deliver to anyone who lives in the city that, that requires it. And then also we do special deliveries each day to the manor and to Renshaw apartments. And then we have people come in and pick up, especially those who aren't city residents. We plan, or I plan, I'd like to get our transportation going back by the end of this month to early June. We're looking to hire at least one driver, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that taken care of at least if we, um, at least a couple of days a week to slowly start. And then we're looking to schedule some, slowly start scheduling some indoor classes around that time as well. Let's see, the park has been obviously going really great. We do have one park attendant that returned and then we're looking to fill those positions as well. And then our sharp program has continued as well. They took a brief hiatus right when it was really bad last spring and then continued with outdoor work last summer and then they can go in through since then. For the budget, um, so our meal program has pretty much kept us going. We've eliminated again virtually all staff besides myself. So our costs are quite low because our intake is quite low. So, um, but like I said, once we are able to start bringing people back in, which is exciting, um, we'll be able to, you know, we'll have to increase that a little bit. But, um, the biggest concern I kind of have would be AEW. I think we need to have or someone come in and do a walkthrough at Hunter because the building obviously is a bit old at this point. I know originally the hallways were going to get redone last year and that got postponed. But I think, um, I think there could be a decent amount of building maintenance that has to happen in there. The hallways also are, are backdoor a bit, our parking lot's quite awful. But it'd be good to have someone, you know, that really, really knows what they're doing, come through and walk through. The first thing though, I would like to improve on is our recreational and online software. So that it makes it much easier for people to either schedule a pavilion online or sign up for recreation classes online because right now we're very limited with that with closed office hours. And even once we reopen, we won't be open the full, you know, 12 to 16 hour days like we normally are. I'd also like to get just a couple of things installed with bathrooms for handicap accessibility. And some park cameras, I think we could use maybe some more cameras around Hunter at some point. But yeah, I think we need someone to really come through and, and look and see what exactly is in, kind of the I guess what, what they would consider to be very relevant to do in the immediate, I guess, effect. For our goals, really, it's, um, I'm anxious to hire more people so that we can get back to our full staff and fully reopen. Personally, as in my position, I'd like to really get more involved with the M-Parks program and the 1650 project. As well, Mike and I have talked about me becoming a certified playground safety inspector to be able to check out our equipment in our parks. Make sure that everything's operating as it should be. And really our main, my main goal is really to be able to make it easier for people to sign up or register for things or reserve things online without having to come in. So we were able to as well just kind of increase our communication with public.
Do a quick rundown first of parks. I have the budget up finally. I was trying to find them, the three of them. It's just a general.
This, I mean.
Oh, this is parks. This is, oh, this is going to be for DPW.
Yeah, that might be that.
That's close, that one. It's, uh, whoops. Do you want to do recreation or senior center first?
Doesn't matter. I mean, really most of our, yeah. Yeah, we really shouldn't have too many changes. I mean, like I said, we haven't really been taking anything in in the recreation programs, but we have not really been putting very much out other than me and utilities at this point. So I really, I don't think too many of the numbers have changed that much.
Stated that there would be the program, the new, the online.
Right, right. I mean, what were you, I'm sorry.
Where's that one at? I can't remember where we put that one for the, the three class to reserve room, the reservations.
Oh, for the reservations. I think that was just going to go under the general, wasn't it? Or the, um, just the operating supplies, I thought. My.
Yeah, so I went up a little bit. Okay.
Yeah.
And then we, uh, we spoke about her salary as well as coming up. I think that was stating that too, to bring her up to par with the other wages as well. Now that she's had a year, the department had.
Interesting year, that's for sure. And I know with our seniors, we talked about, I know we need, we've talked about the computers possibly. We don't have a computer currently for our dispatch desk. And ideally I would like to get that a little bit more streamlined as well. So we would obviously need a computer in there for that.
Do you want to touch on the smart program, that all that we get some with the?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I'm sorry. We do get, um, we got an additional 9,000 this year for, through our CARES Act. We got about 12,000 from them through the municipal and then close to about 20 for the community credits. And then we do also, uh, we're taking our buses in for additional safety precautions to go in. Once we start getting riders on there as well, some screens up and such. And that's all covered by them as well. So it'll be. Like I said, that one, we're waiting on at least one driver.
I know with the parks budget, um, oh, I'm sorry, Gentry.
No, no.
Uh, with the parks budget, you and Matt work in concert with that one.
Yeah. Yeah, we do. Uh, yeah, our salaries, um, under the salary wages, two of the park employees are covered under that. And then the rest of the part-time is all of the park attendants. And then if we have someone watering as well for the flowers. I think most of everything else is, is under his. Our operating supplies are really just like cleaning and things like that, that type of, it's nothing major, like the type of operational supplies that they require.
As far as the capital needs, if I can share it again. But because. For getting some new things.
Yeah, we're looking at at least some more, some additional inclusive playground equipment. I'd like to get at least a couple of things at each park. I don't know how feasible that truly will be. But I'm hopeful that at least if, even if we do things that aren't super expensive, we'll be at least able to get matching brands for just even to small, um, like the swings that we looked at, just, just to get anything that would make it a little bit easier for, um, for anyone to use them, not just, not just what we have going right now.
That's what we had under capital right here, to purchase some items and then also look at the grills and picnic tables, right?
Yeah, I think we've been talking about that for, yeah, but I think that technically started already. I thought it had, but it's, I think it's quite an ongoing process because we have so many, you know, so many picnic tables and stuff.
Just a heads up for next year, which we'll go over tomorrow, but you're fully aware and your board, I'm sure is about the Parks and Rec master plan update.
Yeah, yep, that's going to be fun. And yeah, we've, I've been starting to go through that slowly as well.
I'd like to ask a question when Gina's done.
Absolutely.
When you're all done. It has nothing to do with Parks and Rec.
Oh.
Gina, do you have anything else for us?
No, I mean, I don't think so. That's really just my main goals right there. I'm hopeful that we're able to get, it'll be nice to just get things going a little bit more back to normal. We're really anxious to open the building.
We're anxious to see that too, because when you start operating, that means we're backed closer to the door, right? We'll take any cues we can get at this point.
Whatever it takes.
So Kathy, it looks like it's a good time for your question.
Well, first of all, one of my questions is why is there no closed caption on this meeting? I am missing probably half of what is being said. So with that, I'm at a loss. So my So with that, I'm at a loss. So Michael, if we could get closed caption on here for tomorrow and Thursday, I would greatly appreciate it. I know it's not accurate all the time. But at least it gives me an idea of what people are saying because with all the different mic settings, half of you are mumbled, half of you are so loud and I just, I can't understand half of what's being said. And I apologize for that, but there is nothing I can do about that. So we need to get the closed caption on here ASAP. That's all I have to say. I mean, I have to have it. I, you add it, we're going to have to start meeting in person. Because I cannot hear properly on these Zoom meetings. Thank you.
I apologize for that for this evening. I thought it was set when I set the meeting. I'll talk to Ken to make sure that that's, that he tells me exactly what I need to do for tomorrow.
Please. Cause that's why I look like I'm off in La La Land, because I, I'm having trouble following everything.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Gina? Okay, looks like our police chief is ready to go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'd first like to start off by recognizing this week is National Police Week. I would like to thank all the men and women nationwide for showing up every day and staying true to their profession. So I would just like to thank that and especially the men and women that work for me here at the Clausen Police Department. They do a tremendous job and they provide quite a service for the residents of Clausen. Some staff updates. I have a records clerk who is retiring after 33 years of service. So I'm in the process for that. Our full-time clerk will be, be leaving at the end of June. And we're also in the hiring process for a police officer. We're in the middle of a background investigation. And that candidate is going through the physical exam, psychological exams this week and will be moving forward with the open position that I have currently, which will put me back to the current staff of 17. It is projected I may have one or two retirements coming up in the next six to nine months. So the hiring process will continue and try to fill those vacancies as the paperwork is turned in for those officers. 2020 was an extremely challenging year for everybody. But I'd like to bring some highlights that the police department was able to accomplish through there. We did graduate our first citizens police academy, although, you know, it was supposed to be a 10-week program and I think it was a 10-month program because of all the delays with coronavirus. But the people that attended, we had great reviews. They had a fantastic time. We are looking at moving forward with a fall citizens academy to keep it going, to get more of the residents involved and let them work with us, see who we are. See what we are, you know, in the uniform and, and as, as people that they can talk to every day. So that was an extremely positive experience and I involve many, many officers. Sergeant Horan ran the program and involved many officers and the expertise that they provide to show the residents. We also received the Department of Justice certificate for our use of force policy. To some, that may not, you know, seem that important, but what it does is under the grant funding, if you receive that certification, you're able to obtain grant funding for up to three years. If your department does not hold that certification for some of your policies, you are not able to even apply for the grant. So that's very important for our department and it was a great achievement. We will continue to provide the high quality service for our residents through crime intervention, vacation house checks, and to continue to have positive interactions now, obviously with coronavirus. Some of the events that we attend or some of the, you know, meeting at the schools, et cetera, has slowed up a little bit. But as things get back a little bit better, we will continue that community engagement. And we have recently joined in partnership with Common Ground for immediate responses to assist individuals that have mental health needs, substance abuse issues, or maybe are involved in some sort of domestic violence situation. We reach out directly to Common Ground with that information. They provide resources. And they will respond within 24 hours to have individual contact with people and try to intervene and give them some guidance and assistance that they need. As far as some budget needs, we're looking at replacing two patrol cars this year because of high mileage. And we're going through the enterprise leasing program, which we entered into in, I believe, late 2019. I also put in a request for some updated tasers. There are MMRMA grants, $500 per unit. If we do move forward with tasers this year, I will apply for that grant funding to help offset the costs. And then we will continue, obviously, with training and training needs. Some, a major capital improvement, it was brought up at the last council meeting as well, and it's been on our radar for a bit, is locker room upgrades. That is a priority. As far as the, the men's and women's locker room, getting an upgrade and getting proper lockers and restroom and shower facilities for both the men and women in the facility. So that is, that is a high priority. That is something that the city definitely has to look into and try to move forward in completing that task. And then another one that's there, it's not immediate, but we do have to do our interview room, recorded interview room upgrade. I'm like, it's not necessary this year. I did throw it out. There's a capital improvement. It's probably over the next, I'd say, year to, to three years. That is something that we are going to have to move on. Some goals that I think we'll be obtaining over the next year, we're going to complete the Michigan Association of Police Chiefs accreditation process. I know I, we broke ground on it last year. We're updating all of our policies and we're moving forward with that. There are several things that we need to change here in the police station. Including our property room and some additional cameras in order to comply with that. We're moving hard and fast with that program and trying to get that accomplished hopefully, hopefully by fall, if not at the spring chiefs conference in February. We will be moving forward with crisis intervention training for all of our officers and also autism awareness training. Dealing with individuals. And I think that's some important training. We are moving forward, getting officers signed up for that additional training. Like I said, I already mentioned the second citizens police academy. And then again, as COVID restrictions relax, we definitely are going to increase, go back to our community policing, which all of our officers love to do and engage more with the community. As far as the, the actual budget, there's not really a whole lot of chains. I change, I provided Mike with about a nine-page packet a month ago and Kelly also received the same as far as numbers and requests. As you know, budgets are, I only get a few dollars to play with. The rest of it is pretty much set in stone as far as personnel. So those numbers are being plugged in. There's nothing that is really outstanding or anything that seems would need extra explaining other than what's typically in my budget throughout every year. Other than the capital expenses that I had spoke of. I know that's, there's a lot of information in there. Does anyone have any questions or anything that looks different or out of place for, from what you were given?
She even got a question. The locker rooms, are they part of the accreditation program?
They are not part of the accreditation program. But when you're having come through your facility to evaluate.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, we probably won't have it done by the time we go for accreditation. But as long as we have a plan in place to say, I mean, you know, if it's approved eventually sometime that it's going to happen, because every three years, the accreditation process has to be reviewed. So you can say and in three years, you better have done it or they're going to mix the accreditation from you.
Okay, you got enough money in there for to do that? This year?
We don't have the amount yet. We have it in the other capital because it's going to be under the whole city hall umbrella of reconfiguration.
Right, I think, I think that's part of the place that they separated out. So we make sure we do that.
Sure, sure.
And it I love your training, all the training you mentioned. You got enough money for training that you want to do this year?
Yes, you know, obviously last year training was limited because of COVID. We did start to do, we did a tremendous amount of online trying to stay up to date with what we could. I will have some new hires that will be additional training. My numbers, I think, stayed exactly the same, but during communication, we've had those. If it goes up a little bit, it'll be help. Otherwise, maybe at the end of the year, I may need a budget adjustment. It just depends on how much training we end up putting the new officers through as well.
Well, they're ready to see you put the money in now so we don't have to adjust it. You can always give it back to us.
Okay. That's something I can talk with Kelly about and Mike as well.
Okay. Anything else you need from us?
No, I just, I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for the continued support of, of city services and the police department as a whole. We try to provide the best service possible for our residents. They pay taxes for a reason and we tried to provide that service to them. And we do appreciate the community as a whole and the support that we receive throughout the year.
Do you have a ballpark figure on how much your accreditation is going to cost us with changing the building and everything?
Um, I don't. A lot of it is just in-house, some, some maintenance, just cleaning things up, doing things differently. You know, there's some overtime built in because I have, you know, two sergeants that are the accreditation managers, but those are all budgeted items. I wouldn't have right now, like, you know, what we've put into it at this point. A lot of it is housekeeping. Just policy updates, changing things, making sure we're in line and doing things correctly. You know, we always think we're doing it right, but there's always maybe a better way to look at it or do it a different way. And that, we just want to make sure we're on par with, with everything and doing it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, Kathy, can you see, Ken, let me know that it was a simple button. Can you see the closed captioning now?
I got it on my.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Counsel, I'm off it. Waiting patiently.
So I, I just had a question and I don't know, Chief Servelo, if it's for you or if it's really for Kelly, but I, I remember, I don't know if it was an email or a comment someone made that they were going to do an analysis whether or not that enterprise leasing program was, was, you know, living up to what we thought it was going to, whether it was really saving money. Has someone taken a look at that or can you comment on that? Or you're a Kelly?
Yeah, I don't know if Kelly's had the opportunity yet. So in the beginning, when it was presented, remember it, it was presented as it would take a few years before we actually saw the return. So if you look at my number of, let's see, motor pool lease of 41,000 this year, I need, I need two, two patrol cars. They run around 35,000 apiece. So that would be 70 plus. I need a detective's vehicle. So you're talking about $100,000 for a new vehicle purchase, but that 41,000 lease payment covers, I think, seven, seven vehicles, maybe eight. I don't, I don't have that sheet in front of me. So as time, the, the reason to enter into that program is to have one line item with a flat number instead of, you know, this year I need 100,000 extra six, you know, back and forth. We did get our lease payments went down tremendously because of the sale of some of the older vehicles. They do a great job. The resale amount they get from compared to what we used to, to get, and then that automatically drops our lease. We take that money, roll it right into the, the program and drop for vehicles. So I guess the true, true statement is going to be about three years into it. At that point, to see what the savings is, I did provide a breakdown for Mike of all the vehicles and how many at the end of the leasing program, I, I think it was maybe around 75,000 would be that flat line, but that's not taken into account of any of the resales. And that would be all the, all my vehicles and the code enforcement vehicle as well. It's a yearly fee and that's how that's supposed to be playing out. I guess we'll know in a couple of years to make sure. And obviously if it's, doesn't seem to be working, we would have to get out of it at that point.
So as it stands right now, you feel like it's, it's, it's living up to the, to the expectations.
I do feel that way, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Hey, does anyone have anything else for Chief Servelo? All right. Well, thank you to you and your team. I, I've always think that the police department helps to make the community. The fact that you guys are actively involved and you create such a strong presence, not just the things you do technically, but your input with the citizens on a regular basis is really appreciated. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the support, not only from council but for the, from the community as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, next up will be Matt with the Department of Public Works and Engineering.
And you being Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. Just a brief update. I've been with the city for over 21 years now. We've applied for, and we were awarded the affordability and planning grant from Eagle for $10,000. That's going to offset the cost of a water rate study. That'll align the water bills to, it's been, I believe, 2006, 2007, since we last completed a water rate study. Unfortunately, they didn't have a grant for sewer rate study. So with, with this grant, it will pay for the entire water rate study. So the grant was for 10,000 and I believe the sewer rate study, if we combined it with the water rate study, was an additional 4,000. Which we would like to implement for next year. We also applied for grants, a $2,000 grant for tree planting. Another additional grant from Eagle for 168,500. That's for the drinking water asset management plan, basically in complete distribution system material inventory to identify lead water services. Unfortunately, Eagle put the grant out before they had guidelines on how you have to go about identifying lead water services. So the number of services we need to identify drastically reduced. So with that, the amount of the grant money would reduce. They haven't submitted guidance yet on resubmitting the toll that you're applying for yet, but as soon as they do, we will reapply for that grant. We also applied for just a little over $29,000 from Oakland County to continue the work that's currently going on right now on South Main Street with the joint ceilings and new concrete. We will be putting down permanent lane markers through South Main Street with new pavement. As last year, we've put down temporary markings. We'll put down permanent markings and go through the rest of the major roads and address those that is needed also. We will also be applying for another tree planting grant for DT for the amount of 4,000. The major impact COVID really has had on my department has been we're down one full-time employee in the water department. He'll have to go elsewhere pre-COVID, but you're under a hiring freeze during COVID, so you cannot replace them. And we're still currently down that one person. With this year's budget, you're going to see a lot of increases. You're probably shell shocked if you already looked at it. But this correlates with the capital improvement planning workshop we did back in March of 2020. So if you want to get into the budget.
I can hear you, Mike.
Which one would you like to open first?
I have mine set up in numerical order in the GL mic. So if you want to do DPW general first. See, this is budgeted for nine full-time employees. This is budgeted for nine full-time employees. The major increases you're going to see here is additional operating supplies. That's to offset carryover amounts for uniform purchases for the guys. They're allowed four hundred and fifty dollars a year for their uniforms, but they don't always spend that entire amount of money in a fiscal year, and it carries over. So technically, they could not buy anything in one fiscal year, and then July first, they could go and spend nine hundred dollars. The other increase you're going to see is for the computer operating supplies. We have three, three computers running Windows seven currently, and one the computer running Windows XP that accesses the server for the library seating control system. Hopefully, we can get those replaced. Yes, we decreased the building maintenance costs this year. The plan for this year with the building maintenance was, as you all know, we have the huge pole burnout back. It has two lofts on either end of it, so the entire middle half of that is a lot of wasted space, and we'd like to build additional lofts in the back and put like pallet racks, storage, like what you see at like Home Depot or Lowe's in that building to utilize more of the space inside that building. Like I said, it decreased from last year, but these numbers were estimated before all the lumber prices went through the roof, so. But we'd still like to go ahead and do that, get that accomplished for this year. Down at, for the capital equipment purchases at the bottom of the spreadsheet, fifty-three thousand. That would be for equipment for motor pool. We're looking to add two additional vehicle lift columns. We have four currently, and those can lift a full fire truck loaded full of water. But with, if we can use six in tandem, it would be a lot safer. We haven't had any issues with the four that we have, but it's eerie going underneath them when you got a fire truck up in the air. The other additional purchases from that would be a tire mounting and balancing machine. We also, the mechanics need a updated scan tool to change the brakes on the new lease PD vehicles. There, the brake calipers are computer controlled, so there's no way to release the calipers off of the brake rotors without having an actual scan tool that is capable of doing that. Currently, we do not have that. And the other item that motor pool would like is a air conditioner recliner or recharger, so we can do all all the air conditioning work in-house instead of having to ship it out to a dealership or to like Four Seasons. Then the other capital is for vehicles. That is to replace two of the smaller dump trucks that you see either plowing the parking lots or like the grass through or the blacktop truck. Those are the largest, these pricing that we put in here is what if we were to purchase the trucks and have the dump bodies and pile packages built under the state of Michigan's pricing. We're, I'm supposed to get pricing tomorrow from Enterprise on what it would cost to lease those trucks versus outright buying them. I'm almost certain leasing them would be a lot cheaper. That's basically it for DPW General. The street lighting budget, I've requested multiple times from DTE an anticipated price increase, and I have not received any word back. I did talk on the phone with our community lighting representative, and he was promoted in February, and he assured me he was going to forward my message on to the new lighting director, which has yet to contact me. But I believe last year we did not have any price increases, and I'm anticipating no price increases from DTE this year. So that's pretty much is the same. Mike, can you go to Major Roads with two oh two?
Which one did you say again? Two oh two?
Two oh two, it might be under four forty-six, you label that way, but it's two oh two, four forty-six.
Is it this one? Is that it?
Yep. So this one is, I believe it's budgeted for one full-time employee. Actually, it's not two, I believe. The major increases you're going to see are in the routine maintenance, which is basically a percentage increase from what it went up last year. The traffic signal maintenance is actually going down. The labor is actually going up, but which is about fifty percent of our invoicing, but we've always seen them in under budget on that, so we reduced that line item. The new increase you're going to see on here is a joint ceiling program, which is certainly what they're doing on South Main Street right now, but we would like to continue on and we need to joint steel all the reflective cracking on the new portions of fourteen mile and North and South Main Street that was just overlaid with hot mixed asphalt. The reflective cracking is normal, but you need to get it sealed to keep the water out due to the freeze thaw cycle that we have. And that, that program is to do that and all of the other areas that were recently repaved, such as West fourteen mile and North Main Street. I think that is it for the major roads. If you can bring up two oh three, Mike, maybe four four six, two oh three on yours. Okay, if you go down to the eight hundred line item, this is where you're going to see the major increases here. In the recent past, we haven't had any reconstruction of any of our local streets. And this correlates with the capital improvement plan that was presented last, March last year. We're hoping to repave during on we're hoping to repave during on from Langley to North Selfridge. It would be basically the same that happened on fourteen and Main for that hot asphalt next put down. We also asked to increase the routine maintenance costs so we can replace more of the concrete in certain sections. It wouldn't be total road replacements. That would be concrete patches in different areas that are starting to fail faster than we can keep up with them getting them replaced. Also in here, you'll see another joint ceiling program, and that would be for maintaining the newer roads that have already been replaced, such as, you know, like North Bywood, Elmwood, some of the roads on the east side of town, you know, Essex, Pumpey, that area. I believe that is through two oh three. Can you bring up two twenty-six, four forty-one, Mike, the sanitation?
What was the middle?
Four forty-one. You want to talk about it, Mike, because these are just pass-through costs. Our anticipated proposed pricing projected to go up two and a half percent, which is yearly increases, but nothing real out of the ordinary in this one. You want to bring up five ninety-two, five thirty-six, Mike, water?
Five thirty-six?
Yeah, it's five ninety-two, five thirty-six. Okay. If you scroll down, Mike, to none of the, all of this is, you know, nothing abnormal, and the increase in wages and all that. The major increases you're going to see start that line item. Nine thirty-one, one, yep, that one. That is to replace the water main on the Lerner. Also, the state of Michigan is requiring us to change out lead water services, as we all know, at a rate of at least five percent of the non-services per year. And the additional would be, additional funding would be to convert the entire city over to radio read for water meters. I have a, about a fifteen, twenty-minute PowerPoint presentation, and I'm sure you don't want to see it tonight, but that will explain this more in depth. Right now, it takes three guys reading water meters about forty-three days a year, I believe it is. With radio read, we could read the entire city in one day. So I would say that many working days where the the guys would still have to do their work orders that result from reading the water meters, but it frees up all those extra days where they can be focusing on maintaining the infrastructure. And that's why we requested that. I believe that's it for water, Mike. If you go to, you go to five ninety-two, five thirty-seven.
I'll try. Can you hear me now or no?
I can hear you now.
All right, it's, it's, video and sharing is causing issues, so I apologize for that. All right, five ninety-two, five thirty-seven.
Put an extra bandwidth in the budget, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's where the ARP, right? Five thirty-seven, I had it open. So sewer.
So major increases you're going to see are all the above the normal budget increases for wages and salaries. If you go down to, I believe it's the contracted repairs, nine thirty, five hundred. We put a contractor repairs in here. This is to televise and rehabilitate sections of sewers throughout the city. And that would be, that, this also correlates with the capital improvement workshop that everybody attended on back in March of twenty twenty. And if you, the other large increase was I think this was double budgeted into the capital outlay. So if you see, you can't see my mouse, you can see Mike, but the five sixty-three was budgeted twice. Those are, I believe, the same items budgeted. So that would be televising, cleaning and televising the sewers and then replacing or repairing, depending on what we find in the sanitary survey. And then motor pool mics, six sixty-seven one. You mute it, Mike, you're talking to us.
Did you say six fifty-seven?
Six sixty-seven, two seventy.
I had them all saved as different, I think.
It's probably two seventy on yours. I can just talk about it, Mike, because there's only really two increases. I can just talk about it, Mike, because there's only really two increases. And it's operating supplies and vehicle maintenance line items. And that's just what the projected overages that were that was budgeted from this year that were projected to go over on this year. Most of the repairs that we're seeing are on the older, larger equipment. For the leased vehicles, we haven't had any, any repairs or any issues. The only thing we've had to do with those is change the oil and air filters in them. And I, we haven't even had to do a brake job on those yet. The vehicle purchases were included in the D P W general, along with the motor pool purchases for the left column and the tire balance or any sand tool.
How many vehicles are you leasing again? How many trucks? Under, I see the vehicle lease for twenty-nine fifty. That's for all the, so you guys know too.
I don't believe, we have two pickup trucks that are not leased that the city currently owns that are, you know, not meaning the large dump truck for heavy equipment. The, the smaller dump trucks that I was referring to earlier, that's the largest sized truck that you can lease through enterprise. So it'd be the smaller day-to-day equipment. It would be all the light pickups that you see on the road right now. If it's large, the city actually owns it. We're not leasing it.
Is there any others, sir?
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, a question for Mike.
Mr. Hodges, any questions for Mr. Hodges?
I got a question for Mike.
Can we address questions with Mr. Hodges first? If there are none, you are next. Kathy?
Debbie, you're muted.
I understand there's an issue with the sewer lineup around Anderson Court or the lack of sewer line. Oakland County notified us.
They, they were cleaning their catch basins and they found what appeared to be like a heavy-duty oil sludge in their catch basin. And we investigated, we were going to investigate it all day yesterday, but most of the water department and on the fire department, and they had a structure fire. So we investigated it today, and what we believe happened is there's a fiber optics telecommunications vault just north of that catch basin. And it appears that that had oily sludge in it, and they just ran these fiber optic lines into it. And we believe when they did that, they pumped it into the county, to empty the water out of it. They pumped it into the county's catch basin.
So who's responsible for that? Rectifying it.
First, we have to identify how it got into the, into that fiber optic duct.
So in a roundabout way, we are responsible for it at this point?
No, we're not. Right now, it's basically just a monitor of both Oakland County and Klaasen is going to monitor those and make sure that if not, an ongoing event where something's actually reaching through the ground into it versus someone dumped something into it.
So it's not an actual sewer line, it's just a catch basin? Or has that been sealed off from other sewer lines?
Well, we believe it's just a access vault to access the buried fiber optic lines that were, we believe, had the sludge in it. And when they were putting the new lines and they had to get the water and sludge out of it, and instead of pumping it into a barrel or whatever, they pumped it directly into the Oakland County sketch basin on Kirk's Road.
I, I guess I'm still, that still doesn't answer my question. It, the, where the issue was found, is that it's going to be Oakland County's issue, or is that our issue?
We both have utilities in the same vicinity. We have not found any in our, there's a slight oily sheen on it, which is not uncommon. But the sludge that they found, they went out, their crews were out last week. They found the black sludge. They went out the next day, and there was no trace of it from the event we had.
I'm just, the reason I'm asking that is, is it going to be something that's going to be like a main hit to our budget?
No, if, if it was going to go that route, we would, we'd have identified the source of where it came from. And whoever would be elicit dumper, for lack of a better term, then the city would go after them.
Okay, I just was concerned that it would take a hit on the budget and then screw us up. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hodges? All right, if not, Mr. Sampson, you may address your questions to Mr. Smith now.
Oh. Mike, have we set the water rate for twenty-one, twenty-two yet properly, you know?
No, we have not received the information. I've been checking, it's called Basecamp. It's an online portal. They have the generic statements, but I have not received the letter that the W R C, Water Resource Commission, normally sends out. In the past, it's been, the letter's been dated to April thirtieth. I haven't seen it yet. I don't know if Matt's received it in his office, but I have not. That kind of outlines all of that.
I haven't seen it yet either, Mike.
Yeah. So that's kind of what we rely upon to then set those rates. We have not received that final word from them yet.
Are you going to have it before we vote on this?
I hope so.
Okay, second question. Do you have the money in there for flood litigation that we have to expand this year?
Yes, that was approved back in December that we expend that once we get the information from Renus, which we did out of this budget. And then the fifty thousand will be allocated that we need to be moving forward to show some of the work, which is some of those suggestions that Mr. Hodges has made that will suffice with those requirements.
What line, what line item would that be, money coming in?
It's going out.
What's that? What line item would that flood litigation come out of?
Miss Kelly stated that I, I didn't write it down, but it was stated earlier in the evening. I didn't write it down. Stacy knew it offhand.
Okay, I don't know. Can we find it?
They already addressed that at the beginning.
I, I have the account number.
Five nine two, five three seven, nine nine eight, zero zero one, special item settlement.
Okay.
Yeah, I said at the beginning of the meeting room.
No, I'm having trouble with my headphones. All right, it's all my questions.
I believe that's all we have for this evening. We'll be better with the technology. I hope my two computers will work better tomorrow so we can share the screens better. Thank you for sticking through it tonight. Sorry about, Councilmember Phillips, about the CC. We make sure that we will have closed captioning on from the get-go tomorrow.
I do have a couple of questions for Mike also, if that's okay. Before, sorry. Um, before tomorrow night's meeting, can you give us an idea of what millages are going to be falling off? And what millages we're going to be asking to be reinstated? I'd like to know that. I'd also like to see on this, the forms that you're sending us. What is the difference between the white and the green lines?
That's just, I believe, the settings and then the features, just to do the every other. I believe Kelly, isn't that kind of a function of when you pull that?
That's, that's just to make it easier to read. If it's not, I'll remove them.
Yeah, take them out because it's confusing. If you don't do every other one and you're just sporadic, it's confusing. Okay, so check the millages. I'd also like some answers tomorrow as to how these department heads came up with their numbers and stuff on such short notice. And how we're supposed to work with all this. I guess I've sat through many, many budget meetings, not just for city council, but for being on the board of directors of several other things. And it just doesn't, didn't seem too much like an actual board workshop. It seemed more like a update from all the department heads, which was fine. But I, I guess for a budget workshop, I'd like to see more actual numbers. This is what we've got. This is what we need, and this is what we're projecting. That to me is a true budget workshop. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilman Moffett?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say, having sat through, you know, my first two years on council, budget workshops, and then last year's budget workshop, and then this year's budget workshop, I, out of the gate, this year's budget workshop is just significantly better than the nonsense that we had last year with very, very cursory numbers for each page in each department. This is much more consistent with what we had the previous two years. So I think that this was really good information that we got, like I said, last year's was, was so much more slimmed down and, and it was over one meeting. And so I'm glad to see we're back on track with being provided with the wealth of information that we have been. And I, and I thank Mike and Kelly for getting it together so quickly.
Yeah, it doesn't compare to last year. Last year was a wash. I agree with that.
And the good thing is, sorry, we, we do have the information and everyone has the opportunity to look it over a little bit more thoroughly and bring any questions you have to Mike or Kelly or, and then we can move forward from there. Just because it was presented tonight doesn't mean it's a done deal. So, you know, you peruse it, figure out what sticks in your head, and let's address the questions and we can move forward. But unless anyone else has anything else, let's say thank you to everyone who gave us a synopsis of their department. We really appreciate hearing your goals and we appreciate everyone's diligence and for working late tonight. Thank you all for that. And then tomorrow night, we will be back again at six forty-five to, tomorrow night, we're going to hear from the city clerk in elections, the fire department, building and planning, the downtown development authority, cable council, city manager, information technology in the museum, and then capital planning, millage rates, roads, and the American Rescue Plan Act. So tomorrow, we have some heavy hitters on the schedule again. So get a good snack in and then we get some good rest tonight, come back with your questions, and hopefully we will all see you here again tomorrow.
Thursday, are we starting at six forty-five also?
Yes, tomorrow we are, yes.
No, Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Thursday for the public workshop. Are we starting at six forty-five?
Public workshop?
At the council meeting.
Oh, I thought we had something scheduled for Thursday night.
No, no.
About that, but we didn't agree on that.
No, it was Monday, it was Tuesday, Wednesday, and then next Tuesday will be the council meeting.
Okay, that works out better for me. Cool. Okay, I had it down as Thursday night. Thank you. I'm glad I asked.
Thank you for being wrong on that, Kathy. We all thank you. For not having another one on Thursday. But with that, good night, everyone.
Do we need to officially adjourn or no?
Do we have to adjourn?
Yeah, we'll adjourn it.
Formalities, not my thing, you know that.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Council? Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
And bye. Good night, everyone.
See you tomorrow. Thank you.
Good night.